Good evening, excuse me. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, March 16th, 2022. Could we have roll call, please?
Hal? Campbell?
Here.
Cap?
Here.
Here.
Present. We do have a quorum. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the meeting that was conducted on February 16th. Does anybody have any comments or changes? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Pan, seconded by Mr. Campbell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's a petition by AR Building Company, Inc. for rezoning and preliminary PUD plan and site plan review approval. That's a mouthful. For 11.44 acres generally located north of the I-94 tollway and east of Route 21, south of the Woodlake Apartments. Tracy?
Sure. AR Building Company is seeking the rezoning of an 11.44 acre parcel generally located east of Route 21, north of I-94, and south of Woodlake Apartments. From O1 PUD, restricted office as a planned unit development, to R6 PUD, multifamily as a planned unit development. Preliminary PUD and site plan review approval is requested for a 153-unit apartment complex in three four-story buildings for a density of 13.37 dwelling units to the acre. The proposed zoning is consistent with the village's comprehensive land use plan and surrounding land uses, which include the Woodlake Apartment Complex to the north. The petitioner is requesting three exceptions to the zoning ordinance requirements. These include building height increase from 45 feet to 48 feet. Number two, parking reduction from 266 to 253, although they are proposing six landbanked parking spaces. And number three, requesting the ability to use the existing trees along both the Route 21 and tollway frontages for their required buffer plantings. The petitioner is present this evening to walk you through their plans and answer questions. On this matter, the Planning and Zoning Board has advisory authority, and therefore a recommendation on the proposal to the village board would be required.
Thank you, Tracy. Excuse me. As this is a public hearing, I would request that anyone that intends to give testimony or ask questions should please stand and be sworn in by the village attorney.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Great, thank you. I'd like to remind everybody, as this is a public hearing, as you approach for the first time, please state your name and affiliation for the record. And as most of you know, we did discuss this project informally a couple of months ago, but we can't refer back to any of that. We have to get the stuff in the record during this meeting. Okay? At this time, we'll turn the floor over. It might be easier with the handheld, Mr. Frank. This might be easier. I turned it on.
Is it on? No? Yes? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hal Frank. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Meltzer, Pratil, and Stell. My address is 1515 East Woodfield Road in Schaumburg. I'm pleased to be before you this evening on behalf of the applicant, AR Building Company, Inc. I am joined by Emily Mitchell, representative of the company, and a team of consultants who are prepared to present to you our reasons why the requests for rezoning and for plan development approval are warranted and should be granted. We look forward to addressing the various standards for each of those requests for relief, including discussions of the elements of relief that you just heard about from the presentation by village staff. So, we have a PowerPoint presentation that we'd like to run through with you. I don't know who's controlling it, but Tracy?
Just tell me one.
Okay. So, as Tracy said, this property is situated on Milwaukee Avenue. It's a little bit over 11 acres in size. If you could move forward, there you go. This is who you're going to hear from this evening. Emily for AR Building Company, as I said. And you have Jeff Campbell, the project architect. Jared Plasic is with Manhard, and Eric Isaacs is with Manhard also as project planner. Luwue Abuna is here to provide testimony as to traffic impact and to address the parking. And then I'm here, as you can see. Next slide, please. Thank you. I'm going to turn the floor over now to Emily to introduce all of you to AR Building Company. And as the chairman said, some of you, if not all of you, heard this before, but for the record, we'd like to have Emily reintroduce you to the petitioner here, the applicant. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Well, for the record, my name is Emily Mitchell. I am the Director of Land Development at AR Building Company. My address is 310 Seven Fields Boulevard in Sevensfield, PA. So, pretty quickly here, I will turn it back over to Hal and the design team to talk more about our project in detail, but did want to give you all some background on AR Building Company. So, AR Building Company is a 53-plus-year-old apartment development company. We're based in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. We have a single owner. He has no partners, no investors. We build everything with our own equity. Right now, we have a portfolio of about 9,000 units. We're in 10 states. You can see there on the map where we're located. It's a little hard to see, but the states in the darker red with the yellow circles are where we already have open apartment communities. The states in like the lightish brown color, including Illinois, are states we're looking to break into over the next couple of years. So, along with this project in Gurnee, we are also just starting off on a new project in Matavia. We took the afternoon, we saw the site there, and met with the planning staff. We're really looking forward to getting that started. AR Building Company holds all of their properties for a portfolio, so we go into every project knowing that we're going to be the long-term owner and the long-term manager of those projects. So, we take this very much into consideration as we enter the design and the construction phases of our new projects. We use sound design principles, high-quality construction materials and techniques, because we know we're going to ultimately be responsible for that maintenance, we're going to be responsible for that management, and we want the buildings looking as good in year 20 as they do on day one. We're a fully integrated company, so we buy, build, and manage all of our projects. We acquire the land and entitle it. We build our projects. We have two construction divisions. One's located in Pittsburgh. The other is located in Westerly, Rhode Island, and they act as the general contractor for all of our projects. This really ensures that we can meet those high-construction standards. We also hire all of the onsite staff in each of our communities. So, each of our communities, including this one, has a full-time management office, and all of the staff that work there work directly for us. So, any questions that come up along the way, whether they're now, once the building's under construction, or even once the apartment building's up and running, you can always reach out to me, and I can still be your main point of contact. Can you go to the next slide, please? So, these are just some examples of AR Building's recent projects. I just wanted to give you a sense of kind of our design aesthetic and the types of materials that we use. So, the building up on the upper right there, that's our 60 Mansfield Apartments. That's in New London, Connecticut. We're working on a second phase of that project right now. The building on the bottom right there, that's the Evergreen Apartment Buildings. It's located right outside of Pittsburgh in Monroeville, Pennsylvania. It's a 92 apartment building. It's similar to this project in that it's located right off an interstate. And then, I particularly wanted to draw your attention to the building there on the left. It's in our Reynolds Farm community in North Kingstown, Rhode Island, but it's very close to what we're proposing for this site in Gurnee. This is a 45-unit, four-storied elevator building, and we're proposing 51 units, but it's going to be very similar in form to what you see on the screen here. And then, Jeff Campbell, our architect, is here tonight, and he'll take you, you know, in detail into our design concept. Can you go to the next slide, please? So, these are just some examples of our interiors. On the bottom left there, you can see a typical living room. We have vinyl flooring, floor-to-ceiling windows really helps to bring that natural light into our units. The picture there in the middle is a typical kitchen of ours. You can see our typical finishes, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances. We do try to have either a balcony or patio for all of our units. We find that our residents really enjoy having that outdoor living space. The picture on the top right there, that's one of our community rooms. That's actually located in the docks project there on the left. But each of our communities has a clubhouse, which this one will as well, and you'll see that on the site plan. And in the clubhouse, you'll see a similar community room as this. It also has a fitness room, package room, mail room, full-time management office, and we also have an outdoor pool. We find that our residents are really kind of drawn to these amenities, and it helps kind of create a center in our apartment communities. Go to the next slide, please, please. So, this is our site. As Hal said, it's about 11 and a half acres. It's right off of Milwaukee Boulevard. You can see the Woodlake Apartments there to the right, Six Flags kind of in the distance there, and the tollway is swooping along the left in the bottom there. I'll hand it back off to Hal, but I just wanted to say before I do that, you know, we look for land all over the United States for apartments, and this site really ticks off all the boxes for us. It has great transit access. It's close to all sorts of commercial, retail, and other amenities that draw for our residents, and we think it really makes sense for apartments. It's in line with the comprehensive plan, as Eric will walk you through later tonight, and it's bringing a diversity of housing, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. So, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, as was indicated at the outset of the public hearing, the request is to rezone the property from its existing O1 restricted office zoning district classification to the R6 multifamily residential zoning district classification. That's number one. Number two, to approve a planned unit development for the project and grant preliminary PUD and site plan approval. Number three, to allow an increase in the permitted maximum height from 45 feet to 48 feet. Number four, to provide for a somewhat reduced requirement for onsite parking spaces. The code requires, as you can see, 1.74 parking spaces per unit, and what we're proposing, 1.6 parking spaces per unit. And then finally, to allow the use of some existing trees on Route 21 and I-94 to count towards the number of required buffer plantings. Next slide, please. Thank you. What you're going to hear from now is a series of our team project consultants. The reason you're hearing from them is because we're required, as you know, under your zoning ordinance to respond to certain standards of review for both rezoning and PUD approval. So, I'm going to run through these very quickly. These come right out of your zoning ordinance. In order to establish a case for rezoning, as we're requesting, we have to prove up, number one, that the zoning and the use, this is really, number one, the zoning and use of what we're proposing is compatible with the zoning of surrounding properties and the existing uses of surrounding properties. Number two, the extent to which property values of the subject property are diminished by the existing zoning classification. In other words, the extent to which the current property is devalued or diminished by the fact that it's zoned for office uses. Number three, the extent to which the proposed amendment, meaning the change to R6, promotes public health, safety, and welfare. Number four, the gain to the public from the rezoning as opposed to the hardship imposed on the applicant from the existing office zoning. Number five, the suitability of the property for the purposes for which it has been and is presently zoned. And you'll hear, I don't know if you've already heard this or know this, but number six is the length of time the property in question has been vacant, as presently zoned. As all of you may know, or probably know, this property has been in its current condition since 1986 or 1988 and before, when the approvals for the Woodlake Apartments was granted by the village. The village at that time left this particular partial zoned for office uses with the hope that an office development would appear on the site. So, it's been, you know, well over 30 years that the sign has been on the property, seeking office development without any takers. Number seven, the consistency of the proposed amendment with the village's comprehensive plan and land use policies. And you've already heard staff report to you that what's being proposed is consistent with the comprehensive plan. You're going to hear a little bit more about that from Eric Isaacs, the project planner. And then finally, that the proposed amendment will benefit the needs of the community. Next, we also have to prove up, as part of our case, that the request for approval of our planned development, our planned unit development, has been made. Number one, the first standard is that the proposed PUD will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity for uses that are already permitted. Number two, that the PUD will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses in the zoning district, which you'll hear, there's not too much of that. That there is provision for adequate utilities, drainage, off-street parking, et cetera, pedestrian access. Number four, that provision, adequate provision has been made for vehicular ingress and egress from the project site so as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Number five, that all the buildings and the parking areas and the walks and everything else has been designed to be compatible with the surrounding uses and neighborhood. Number six, that the area where the PUD is proposed to be constructed, that is not to be used for structures, in other words, the open space area is suitably landscaped. And finally, that the PUD preserves unusual topographic or natural features of the land. So, the testimony you're about to hear, we're going to try to run through in a relative quick fashion, provide you with facts and evidence that will help you make findings of fact that the standards of review for both the rezoning and PUD approval have been met, and hopefully through this testimony, you will be persuaded that they have been. So, with that, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Eric, who is going to talk about, again, think about that first standard on the rezoning list, the compatibility of what's being requested, both in terms of land use and zoning, is consistent and compatible with the surrounding zoning and use of nearby properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Hal. Good evening. And for the record, I'm Eric Isaacs with Manhard Consulting, 700 Springer Drive, Lombard, Illinois. So, the first slide here is regarding the zoning. The proposed rezoning will increase the compatibility with the existing adjacent zoning, being that the zoning directly north is the R5 PUD. So, this R6 that we are proposing is going to provide an excellent and effective transitionary zoning between the tollway and the existing R5 zoning. Next slide, please. So, the proposed rezoning is going to increase the compatibility with the existing adjacent uses. It's tucked in between existing southerly corridor and the tollway that we've already alluded to, and then that Main Arterial, Illinois Route 21, Milwaukee Avenue. It complements the existing Woodlake Apartments, as we've already stated before, by essentially providing an expansion of the same exact type of use, and it adds on to the transitionary effect of a little bit more dense closer to the tollway, creating less dense as you move east, so as a good planning practice. Next slide, please. So, this area is a part of the Washington and Milwaukee subarea of your comprehensive plan designated for multifamily focus as this part of the area. It will leverage the existing adjacent multifamily through expansion, creating an optimal and logical last phase of development for this area. So, I will leave on my slide that the proposed rezoning is completely consistent with the objectives called out in the comprehensive plan. I'm going to hand the microphone over to my colleague at Manhard, Jared Plasic, who's going to walk you through more site-specific elements of this plan. Thank you.
Excellent. For the record, my name is Jared Plasic with Manhard Consulting, address of 1 Overlook Point, Suite 200 in Lincolnshire, Illinois, and I am the project manager for the project. As Eric and everyone before him alluded to, this site is uniquely situated next to the tollway and has some relatively decent fall here for the state of Illinois of approximately 30 feet over the course of the site. It also features existing trees which buffer the property, both from Milwaukee Avenue as well as from the tollway, and our goal is to try to maximize these natural features as part of our proposed land planning practices, which includes preserving the existing trees that are along the buffer way, as well as utilizing them for our buffer requirements for the property and taking advantage of the natural features that are there. Next slide, please. So, as illustrated, some of the site constraints for this particular site are the required landscape buffers along the tollway as well as Milwaukee Avenue. There's also a very small existing ephemeral wetland cutting through the center of the site that's roughly, it's less than .1 acres in size, that will be filled as part of this development. That is underneath the .1 acre threshold with Lake County SMC. And there's also an existing stormwater pond that is sized previously for this development, which we are going to work with the Village of Gurnee's staff in order to consider two potential options. One would be the expansion of the basin to meet the current stormwater requirements or pursuing potentially a fee-in-lose strategy, which also utilizes existing code requirements as well. Next slide. As illustrated, there is a flood plain at the southern portion of our property, which consists of the existing detention basin that we just described, and that is one of the reasons why we are considering alternatives for the expansion of the basin in order to pursue the permitting practices, which will help to expedite the development of this property. And with that, I will hand it over to Jeff, who will walk you through the exciting part of the architecture.
We joke that I get all the good images. My name is Jeff Campbell. I'm an architect and a principal with Rothschild Doino Collaborative. We're an architecture and urban design firm. We're located at 2847 Penn Avenue in Pittsburgh. So, we've been working with AR for about 22 years now. I personally have been working with them for 18 years. We do most of their new construction, so all the images that Emily shared earlier, we were the project architect on. So, we have a good sense of what they've done in the past and a good sense of what's been working. One of the great things about AR is that because they are involved and they maintain and own all their properties, we actually get a lot of good feedback from tenants and users as we go, so we can use that on the next project that we develop. Is it okay if I approach the slide?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. So, what we're planning here is that Reynolds Farm project that Emily shared that was in the left-hand side of that first slide that you saw. This is based on that, so this is a similar architecture, similar type of massing and materials, a little different in its actual makeup, but it's based on that in general. When we laid out the site, we really wanted to make sure that we were providing frontage on both Woodlake and then on Milwaukee Avenue as well. You know, really trying to give a little bit of presence to the community along Milwaukee, but then also trying to keep in and keep consistent with the rest of Woodlake and Woodlake Apartments and try to create a nice arc as you go across there with the road. The other thing we wanted to do was, as Emily mentioned, there's always a clubhouse, which has a management office in it and a fitness area, as well as a recreational area. We wanted to make sure, you know, there's some beautiful views off to the south here, and we really wanted to take advantage of those, so that the clubhouse and a swimming pool would actually be located to that south area. The idea that you'd be coming up through the site, you'd get to the clubhouse and you'd get that, you know, get those views off to the south. There are three identical buildings that kind of make up the rest here, and I think we'll go into the elevations here in a second. So, here's that site plan. I'm cutting some people off, so maybe I'll just walk around a little bit. We are proposing 153 units, so each building would have 51 units. Those are 27 one-bedrooms and 24 two-bedrooms in each individual development. The parking counts you can see here, although we'll go into that a little bit later in the presentation as well, so I'll avoid it for now. But you can see a couple of things I just wanted to point out. One is the, you know, that orientation again to Woodlake and to Milwaukee, trying to keep two buildings up there. One of the things that we're very particular about when we lay these out is making sure that units, buildings don't have views directly of each other. They're really, you know, views that are longer views, views that have nice sunlight, things like that. So, one of the things we're trying to do is space these out, you know, really trying to create a little bit of space to them. The other thing, when we get into the floor plans, you'll see they tend to be loaded to one side, so every unit has a porch, but we try to put those porches more to one side and then figure out where the best views are for that building. So, here you can see we kind of promoted views out to the south and then views over Milwaukee for that building and then off to Woodlake as well. And then finally, I guess I'll just touch on, you know, the clubhouse. The topography does drop off towards the stormwater areas. We really wanted to make sure we were staying upper on that upper area and not doing some massive grading to get down to that. Next slide, please. Thank you. And here you can see the architecture in more specificity. You know, we do like to use a lot of brick. Again, this is a maintenance thing. AR really wants to make sure that in 20 years, this building looks as good as it does the day it's built, and they find brick is a good quality for that. We use a lot of trim as well, so you'll see the massings are really broken up with some trim accents that you get. All the porches are wrapped in trim. We have trim at all the corners. And then the, you know, the overall massing uses these gables that are really trying to break down sod and really trying to make it, you know, give it a smaller sense and not feel like a four-story building. So, you'll see the roof lines in some points come down to three stories. We do play with that brick. We have, it doesn't read as much in elevation, but with all those porches, you also get a lot of variation, a lot of shadow on the facades as well. One thing I wanted to point out, because it is directly part of the request here, is the height. The height limit is 45 feet in this area. We're proposing 48 feet. It's actually 38 feet to the eve. We looked at, you know, doing something that could be a flat roof and come in under that 45 feet, but it just frankly did not meet the aesthetic and that's sort of the residential nature of Woodlake Apartments and really in keeping with everything else that's here. So, the reason that we're asking for this is to really get an architectural aesthetic that's just a little more, you know, has these gables, is a little more broken up in that nature. I think that's, you know, that's it for this slide. And then here's some side elevations. Again, you see some of that trim. You know, I should mention, Emily mentioned the windows. We do use large windows. I mean, our windows can be six feet. Sometimes they're, in some spots, we do have floor-to-ceiling windows. And again, that's just to promote light as much as we can within the unit. Next slide, please. And then here's the floor plan. So, we do have a mixture. The one bedroom and two bedrooms are mixed throughout. You can see here where the porches in this particular one are all located, you know, trying to get as many as we can to the top of the page, if you will, so there's just four per unit that go this way, and then the rest all go to the north. It is a fully elevated building. It's accessible, so every unit has, if you're, you know, into the building code, what's called a Type A or Type B accessibility, so you can get a wheelchair to it and through it. Some of them can be completely adapted into fully accessible units as well. It's fully sprinkled as well, NFPA 13R, and four stories, and then we just have a unit mix breakdown on the left there, if that's important. Next slide, please. And then the clubhouse as well. We have, here we, you know, give a sense of what we're proposing for the clubhouse. You know, we have the large fitness area off to the left that's usually connected to the pool, large mail and package room as well, restrooms to help support that pool and fitness use, a sales and management office right at the front, and then a clubhouse that would be in keeping with that initial slide that Emily shared, off to the right there as well. And then, you can also get a sense of those elevations. So, that's good. So, with that, I think I'll hand it over to Luwue.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Luwue Abuna. I'm a principal with KLA Way.
I'm a principal with KLAW. We're located at 9575 West Higgins Road in Rosemont. I'll briefly touch on the traffic and parking study. So we prepared a traffic study that was submitted to the village, and as part of the study, we looked along the Milwaukee Avenue corridor, essentially between Washington, the two intersections of Woodland, Woodland Lake Boulevard, and then the ramps to and from the north on I-94. We took counts during the, you know, typical morning and evening rush hour to get an idea of the amount of traffic that travels through these intersections and how these intersections operate currently. We generated the traffic for the proposed development and added on top of the existing traffic. We accounted for background growth over the next six years, just to kind of look into the near future to make sure that these intersections, how they would operate. Essentially, what the study showed that the signalized intersections, both at Washington to the north and the off-road to the south, operate adequately, and that those intersections, with the signals, create enough gaps along that corridor to allow traffic to enter and exit of Woodlake Boulevard. Woodlake Boulevard has two intersections, one at the north end here and one at the south end. Both are under stop sign control. Our development being at this location with two curb cuts serving it, we anticipate majority of the traffic there would use this intersection, particularly if they're traveling to the south or getting onto the tollway. We anticipate some traffic perhaps would use also the north intersection, so we believe that would help balance the traffic and reduce the traffic load at either intersections. They both have left turn lanes on Milwaukee, so there are Saatman left turn lanes at both intersections, and both legs of Woodlake have two exiting lanes. So there's plenty of capacity to accommodate the traffic from the proposed development, and our study has determined that the operations of those two intersections, as well as the signalized intersections, will continue to be within acceptable standards and levels of service. From a parking standpoint, we looked at the adequacy of the parking from two perspectives. One, we looked at published data by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, where they've done studies of similar developments in a suburban setting, not near transit, and this development and the parking ratio that is being proposed falls within that recommended range. And then we also looked at similar developments that have been proposed, planned, and constructed in the suburbs of Chicago. We looked at developments in like Deerfield, Vernon Hills, Northbrook, Morton Grove, and what we found that the parking ratio that is provided for these development average is consistent with what this development is proposing. So again, we believe based on that, that the parking supply will be adequate. Thank you.
Thank you. Louie, real quickly, I know you said that on the way the project's been designed and its proposed use, that the levels of service will be adequate at the intersections and obviously Milwaukee Avenue will have the capacity to handle this development, and I assume you would conclude, but I'd like you to confirm, that this will, as it's been designed and as the property is proposed to be developed, it will not create undue congestion on Milwaukee Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next slide, please. I think, back to, I think we can go to the next one? Sure.
As has been previously described related to the existing topographic conditions on site, the site has a decent amount of fall across the site. So what we've done effectively is essentially step down across the site as you start with the two buildings on the north side and you make your way to the south. The sites, you know, we utilize the existing contours and the existing topographic nature of the site to provide that stepped feel to it as it makes its way down to the detention basin while maintaining and preserving the buffer on the edges of the property to the north and to the west next to the tollway. Next slide, please. In addition to that, we provide sufficient utilities to service the site from a water, sanitary, and storm perspective and utilize the existing detention basin, and we find that the services to these buildings and everything related to the improvements is adequate in nature and is sufficient for the proposed development. Next slide, please. As has been previously described, our landscape plan takes advantage of the existing trees to the north and to the west of our property and utilizes the existing buffer that has already been previously provided, and as such, we are seeking relief to utilize that existing buffer in its natural state and not disturb it in an effort to continue to preserve and maximize the effectiveness of that buffer. In addition to that, we are providing sufficient landscaping as is required in all of the exterior areas not occupied by structures, buildings, parking, et cetera. And in addition to that, we are providing two trash enclosures, which are sufficiently screened as per the requirements of the Village of Gurnee ordinance. I believe that concludes my question.
Thank you, Jared. And before you sit down, let me ask you again, just to summarize, you talked, you showed a grading plan. Is it a fair statement that all of your grading plans, engineering plans, will conform with all applicable stormwater management ordinances?
Yes.
You're not seeking any relief from any of those? And you talked about the, the sewer and water facilities will be constructed, and is it your understanding also that the village's systems have the capacity to serve this development?
Yes, first. I think we know the village's staff is the boss.
Very good. Thank you. Lastly, before I summarize, I'd just like to note for the record, for the public hearing record, that as required, we have submitted an economic impact analysis, and just I'd like to highlight a few key points from the analysis that we submitted, again, because the standards of review call for, you know, benefit to the public and impact for the public. So just for the record, our study calculates that almost $600,000 a year in real estate taxes will be generated. That's the projection of, at full build-out for this development, which is significantly more than the property is currently generating in real estate taxes. Of that amount, approximately $275,000 annually will be payable to Gurnee School District 56. Approximately $136,000 will be payable to the high school district, Warren Township, District 121. Even after considering the impact, the cost impact to the school districts, this will still be a positive money maker, if you will, for the school districts. Again, because of the nature of the units being proposed here, one-two-bedroom apartments, it's, we don't, our client and our analysis is such that it's not anticipated a lot of students will be generated. Using the village's table or what is typically used for student and people generation projections, we're anticipating only four, based on that table, four elementary, four high school students being generated, and if you figure the cost of that based, using the school districts' figures that they report to the state, it still results in $74,000 of positive income, positive revenue to District 121. With respect to the grade school district, the projection using the table is that it's estimated there'll be 10 students, elementary school students generated at a cost of $14,000, operational cost of $14,000 per student. That too is the number that the school district reports to the state of Illinois. So even if you factor in the operating cost, projected operating cost, the project still is anticipated to produce a net positive fiscal benefit to District 56 of $133,000, again, annually. That's every single year. And I would also note, and we make reference to this in the economic impact analysis that we've submitted, that AR building companies' actual experience is even more favorable to the school district. They're finding from their other projects that the number of students they're generating is even fewer than that that the table would project. So these numbers, we think, are pretty conservative. Finally, of the tax amount that I mentioned before, we're projecting about $72,000 is going to be generated for the village itself, and while, you know, that number isn't as positive as it was for the school districts, we still think that that's not surprising for residential developments like this in the village and that for the village, this provides other benefits besides the, than the tax revenues itself. Specifically, we've indicated in this report recurring revenues estimated at $72,000 a year annually, as I said, and a deficit of approximately $93,000 a year annually, so as I said, a slight deficit. With that, I'd like to bring our presentation to a conclusion. I'm not going to, again, repeat all the standards of review for rezoning, but if you see them, again, we, I started out the presentation by summarizing them. We believe we've provided testimony to you tonight and that we've submitted in the materials we've submitted with the applications and petitions, that we've provided you the, with evidence that all of the standards for rezoning have been met and all of the standards for granting the planned unit development have been met and that approving the elements of relief that we've requested in terms of height and trees and parking can all be granted without adverse impact on the public health, safety, or welfare. So with that, we'll conclude our presentation. We look forward to receiving any questions that you might have and that members of the public might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to start first by just getting some things into the record, just to clarify and move things along a little bit. The parking and traffic study, is it safe to say that the village's consultant is supportive?
Yes, that's a fair statement.
Okay. With regard to the height of the building, is the fire department okay with that additional four feet?
Yes, the rescue area, the height of the rescue area would not be substantially changed based upon the pitch of the roof is basically the difference.
Okay. And then regarding the landscape, the landscaping buffers in particular, are the, I personally, conceptually, I'm not bothered by who put the trees where. I'm concerned that the buffer is there. So my question really is, are the trees that are there within the property lines that we would expect the landscaping buffer to be? Long story short is, are they in the right of way owned by the county or the state, or are they on the property?
They're on private, they're on the property, the subject property.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to kind of get those big picture things out there.
Yep.
Who'd like to know?
I can go first. I am generally supportive of this proposal. I have no issues with the height exception, no issues with the parking. About the landscaping, I mean, this is maybe a question for staff, right? If we did not grant the exception, would we dig up the existing trees and replant new trees to meet the requirement? Would that be the plan, David? If we did not grant the exception?
I think they could probably fit them in, but their landscaper may be here. It would not serve them or us to have those dug up. They would just have to replace those trees that they're digging up anyhow. So it just adds to the number of trees that they would have to plant there. I would assume that there would be locations where they might be able to put those in that buffer yard, but they would be behind a significant amount of trees, especially along the tollway. I had the numbers here. I don't have them off the top, but there's a significant number of trees that they're preserving, asking for relief for that.
Yeah, I read through the notes. I just wanted to get that clarification. So I'm generally supportive of that as well. The last piece is the sign width, and I know we have the notes, Tracy, here. Are these, this woodland sign, is the sign being proposed the same size as the existing signs?
We were really talking about the mass of the structure and not the face itself. The sign face is consistent with code. It's allowed by right. Because this is a planned unit development, you have the right in a site plan review, you have the right to be more restrictive on the sign structure itself, and I just know historically that you've had some issues with some of the other massive sign structures, not the actual sign face, but the structure that's holding the sign face. And I just wanted to provide you with a comparison of what's existing there for Woodlake, and based upon what's there for Woodlake, it looks like it's about a 12-foot wide sign structure, which is not really, is different than what they're proposing. They're proposing a 20-foot wide sign structure. The face of the actual sign is relatively consistent, but it's the mass of the structure that's a little different.
I see.
They did provide, I think, I don't know if they want to talk about this, they did provide an alternative sign structure that is 12 feet in width, that's more consistent with what is existing for Woodlake at the north entrance. So I just wanted to provide you that for some background.
Yeah, where is that proposal?
Tab 28.
Tab 28. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
And just so we're all visualizing the sign properly, can you put up one of the site plans and just point out where the sign's going to go?
Yeah, it took me a while to find that.
Any one of those is fine, Tracy. I just want to know where the monument's going to go.
The side is just low to the width here.
So it's on Woodlake Boulevard, it's not really on Milwaukee. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Dave?
I just want to say overall that I'm very pleased with a lot of the features of the project. And I, I'll just highlight some of the things that are especially related to the relief that you're seeking. So number one, on building height, I'm completely in favor of granting the building height because I'm all for architectural quality, and I think if you're going to go the direction of flat roofs, it just completely diminishes the residential feel of it, turns into a very cold industrial feeling, you know. So I'm definitely in favor of that. Can you touch on where the HVAC and everything is located? Because I think there was part of some of this that I read that, I just wanted some clarity as to where all the HVAC is.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. If you could go to the elevations, the best place to see it. So, you know, actually, after years of putting it all over the place, we found, the best place to put it is actually right here on the roof. So it's actually not on the site. Each individual unit, we don't have through-wall units. You'll see that in a lot of apartment buildings where they're right in the end of the building, you get vents all over the place. We don't have those. They're actually more traditional units with split systems. And then on the roof itself, we have all those different condensing units that are all hidden up there. And because of the slope of the roof, we can actually slope it up like this and then step it down, so it's hidden in that area as well.
Good. I thought that's what you were doing, and I just wanted to get clarification that that was what was happening, because I think that's a good approach to it, so thank you. Regarding parking, again, I think that the request is minor and very reasonable. For me, on the landscaping side, I was just trying to get a better understanding, because when I drive by the site, obviously, it's just considerably wooded, and so it's very hard for me to visualize what's left when this is done, when I drove by it today. And so I wasn't sure if there was anything in your presentation, again, where you can maybe more clearly delineate where this line is when we're all done and what's left, because it was just difficult for me today on-site to kind of figure out where that all is.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent question. This should, that should illustrate fine. So essentially, along this corridor and along this, there's approximately a 100-foot buffer zone that we're looking to maintain that includes those existing trees. So it ends up being a pretty considerable chunk here that ends up being preserved, with realistically the only, you know, infringement on this is we do have to make a sanitary sewer connection here, but otherwise, we're looking to maintain this existing trees that are along that. So it ends up being 100 feet, and the distance, just for perspective, from the property line to our clubhouse is actually 117 feet. So pretty much that entire strip is being preserved, and as you mentioned, there are still some considerable trees, you know, further into the site that unfortunately have to be removed as a part of our development, but we are looking to maintain as much of those existing looking to maintain as much of those existing trees within that buffer as we can. And then, again, asking for relief because we are looking to preserve as much of the existing trees as possible to not, you know, have to provide additional landscaping or disturb any of that.
Yeah, because I guess, you know, one of the things that I noticed, and again, I was driving in the evening when the tollway lighting was already on and the Milwaukee Avenue intersection lighting was already on. So really, pretty much along your entire perimeter, on the toll roadside and on Milwaukee side, there's very high-level lighting, highway-type lighting. And so I just want to have some understanding and make sure that this site, you know, has a nice degree of protection from some of that, not just from the visual side of it, from the light pollution side of it, from the noise side of it.
Sure.
So I also wasn't sure whether there were any other mitigations being taken, you know, to buffer any of the noise, or we're just counting on Mother Nature and the trees that you're leaving to help with any of that.
Well, I'll first just speak to kind of some distances here. So again, there's about, again, 120-ish feet between the property line and this. And then from there, there's a further 70 feet before you even reach the edge of the tollway where some of those lights would be, where some of the traffic is. It's 200 feet, two-thirds of a football field, but it is a considerable distance for light pollution and for traffic. And again, considerably large distance between Milwaukee Avenue of about 140, 150 feet before you're hitting there. And again, that's a lower traffic, a little bit lower light poles, and we feel like there's sufficient space there in buffering in order to preserve, you know, again, the presence of this community. And I think as Emily highlighted, you know, there is a desire to pick out the best possible spot, and that's always taken into consideration when they select a site as well.
Because you did put balcony side on that, on that far western building, you put the balcony side to the Milwaukee side, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And part of that is to take advantage of the existing trees that are there and try to take advantage of some of those views rather than having the balconies face internally towards the parking lot.
Understood. Thank you. One last thing, then. I was wondering if you could address internal site circulation and connectivity with the surrounding community as well. I'd like to have an idea as to your vision as to how friendly this location is pedestrian-wise, bicycle-wise, that type of thing, and then the connectivity to the community. Because, you know, we've talked about this on many meetings in the past about some of the issues we've had in the village of Gurnee and the connectivity of our community and, you know, gaps in transportation.
Sure.
Non-vehicular, let's call it. So if you can address current conditions and then what's being done onsite and connecting into, you know, to the rest of the neighborhood.
Absolutely. So the existing site here has, you know, and actually, if you could go to the site plan, this might show it a little bit better. Yeah, that'll do. So the existing site was actually, you know, there was a, you know, originally intended kind of a curb cut as well as a drive that was a little bit closer to Milwaukee Avenue. And so what we wanted actually to do was kind of slide that back a little bit to the south, provide a little bit more, again, pull everything back, provide a little bit more relief from that. And as part of that, we are going to remove this median and we'll work with village staff to, you know, either look to extend this median or find a suitable alternative there. But then we wanted to provide two entrances to our site. This allows for that site, you know, circulation allows for the ability for any kind of traffic, whether it be our internal traffic, whether it be emergency vehicles, et cetera, to be able to utilize this. It provides two forms of access points, it best serves the site, provides that good internal circulation that you're looking for. As it relates to, you know, external site connectivity, again, providing those two access points, pulling this a little bit further back does allow for that, you know, intersection to be lengthened a little bit, provides a little bit more of a stacking ability there. And as well, there's the existing path, and we're tying in our path here, up here, and continuing to utilize the existing sidewalk network that's there.
Thank you.
Edwin?
Well, most of my questions have been answered. I think this development fits the property well, personally. I'm glad to know that the trees remain on their property, that's one of my, that was one of my questions. For me, as far as the sign goes, I just think the alternative looks more appealing, even if it isn't, I don't know what this would look like on that site, but I just think aesthetically, the other sign is more appealing than this one. And there's just, it looks like a wall with lettering on it. I just think the other one is better, personally, more appealing.
The one that's in section?
On page 28. The other one's on?
I just wanted to clarify.
The other one's on tab 15.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyway, that's my comments.
Generally, I, again, there were ones that said I'm in favor of the project. I'm concerned with the removal of all the trees in this site. And, yeah, the architects are drawing, we can kind of see where the trees are, but if we can get an aerial view of, like, if you have an exhibit G in section 18 or 17, you can see the tree area and then kind of see where you are, then you show us where the building's going to be on aerial view, what trees are actually going to be removed at that point. Someone can elaborate on that.
Yeah, the existing, yeah. So, so here's kind of building, excuse me if I get the numbers wrong, building one would be in this location, and then the clubhouse will essentially be here. So you are correct, there are existing trees onsite. Realistically, for the development of the site, there's, there's no way to preserve all of these trees and maintain that ability. Again, we're looking to try to, I'd say maximize the ability, and we have done our best to pull, you know, the site as far to, we'll call it the east into the south as we possibly can, understanding too that there is, you know, flood plain, floodway that really prevents us from pulling even further south into the east. And really, you know, maximizing even further the trees, I mean, realistically, that's the limitation that prevents us from pulling even further that way while still maintaining a developable area that makes sense for the product type, makes sense for what we're looking to develop. So again, we think we've done everything we possibly can to preserve these existing trees. Again, we're trying to minimize any of our impact into those trees as much as we possibly can and try to preserve those natural features and take advantage of them for the site.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Jason Cambitzis, I'm the president of AR Development Company. Thank you all for having us here. Just thinking about the trees, and I know they are, you know, talk about them a lot tonight, they're not all equal. If you look at the site, the inside trees are much smaller than the outside trees. I think in this plan, we preserve the most significant-sized trees, and really, they do create a major buffer. We were just onsite, been to the site many times, and you can actually, frankly, you can drive into the site and do that. What this picture shows you here is much smaller things here, you know, that go out, and it looks, it's like, just saying, it's a little deceptive than what it is, but, you know, for us, the preservation of all the trees is paramount to us. And so, you know, we want to keep those big ones around the edges. Aesthetically, we think they're great, they're a nice defining feature of the property. And, you know, they just kind of soften it up next to the highway. So I just want to interject myself and just state that briefly. Thank you.
Oh, I just, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Remember, the village does have a woodland ordinance, so any tree that's removed over six inches in caliper has to be replaced. So they are aware that there is a replacement schedule for the trees that they are removing. This is also a planned unit development, so they will have to, when they come back in, they'll have to come back before you for final PUD plan approval. They'll have to have a game plan for how they're addressing those replacements. It is possible that they're not going to be able to physically accommodate all those trees back on the site, so there are options for them to discuss. It's potentially putting the trees back on the site, putting larger trees back on the site instead of smaller two- or three-inch caliper trees. It's potentially a split between replacement trees and a fee-in lieu, but those things would be discussed at final, and ultimately, the village board has the final say in regards to that woodland ordinance and how that is ultimately met.
Thanks, Tracy. I was going to ask you to kind of clarify, because it's been a while since we've seen something of this magnitude, and some of our members have never seen anything like this. But there are two distinct issues here with trees. There's the issue with the buffer, and then there's the issue with remediation.
Correct.
And in the past, we've seen a combination of both. Some people get turned off by the concept of fee-in lieu of replacement, but if you get really hung up about replacing it onsite, sometimes you end up doing things that are just not practical. And we have in the past gone down the route where money goes into a kitty with the village, and the village identifies the open spots, if you will, that could use some trees, and we put them there.
Just noting, like, in my subdivision, we had to cut down some trees just to retain them all back up, and it was something like, it was a criminal act against the people of my little neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm kind of sensitive to trees for that.
Yeah.
But I was out at the site today, and they noticed that in the front part, they are the smaller trees, they are the shrubs and stuff like that, so. And the signage, I'm more in favor of the 28th tab sign more than anything.
Okay, at this, yeah, go ahead.
I had a question on the intersection. If this all didn't work out like planned as far as the traffic that it generated, can that intersection where the tollway on-ramp is, could that be signalized? Could they put a signal up there? Or is it not permitted because is it too close to Washington?
I'll defer to Mr. Ziegler on that one.
It's not too close to Washington, the south on-ramp, or the south off-ramp, just a little bit farther south on 21, is a signalized intersection.
Oh, it is.
That one was done when the state rebuilt the Grand Avenue interchange, they put in a permanent signal there. Typically, you want a quarter-mile spacing between the traffic signals. That one's about 1,100 feet to the south access point. It may be able to do it, however, it's basically a three-legged intersection because you only have an on-ramp going onto the tollway, so it'd be questionable whether you would get the warrants in order to put a signal there even with the development. But it's a possible, it would be possible.
Okay. This, as this is a public hearing at this time, I'm going to close our initial discussion and open the floor to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, if you could please find the microphone and state your name and address, please.
My name is Sylvia, I currently work at Woodlake Apartments. I'm at 101 Woodlake Boulevard.
Sylvia, I have to ask your last name, too.
Oh, Sylvia Brunns.
Thank you.
So my question is, I know that they mentioned that they're trying to build 153 apartment units. My only concern is that right now, we maintain the landscaping, and I'm here with our residents, it just makes me sad that we're tearing all those trees down, because that's one of the things that our residents love the most, is just all that nature that's back there. Like, we have a lot of wildlife that comes through our property, so that's my only fear is seeing that all go. I understand that this is something that will probably happen, which is okay, but just hopefully they can, you know, put those trees back up and just, you know, keep the property as beautiful as it is currently now. One of my questions were if there's any concern with parking, because right now, are they going to be pet-friendly? Do they have a dog park, or will they have one? Because we're so close, we're going to get that heavy traffic with, you know, people parking on our side, too. So that's a concern as well. So I just want to have an idea on how many parking spots they're planning to have with AR Building Company in this community, just so we know that we're not going to have those kind of issues with any parking spots or, you know, obviously residents leaving any feces on our side of the property. So I just want to make sure that all of that is also clear.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't explain how it works, but we ask people to ask the questions, we listen to all the questions, and once everybody's asked their questions, then we answer them. Okay. All right, thank, anybody else?
I have any questions, Scotty?
My name is Steve Weiskarber, I currently live at Woodlake Boulevard, we love it there, we love the area, it's beautiful. I have the same concerns as Sylvia does, but I was wondering if there's any, any knowledge of the lease, the monthly lease allowance for the one- and two-bedroom apartments yet? Is it too early for that? Or I was just kind of wondering, what, what, are you guys calling yourselves luxury, high-end? Just kind of curious about that. We have beautiful places in our place, and we just kind of want to keep the area nice, and so, just a, just a concern. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Go ahead.
My name's Dan Rydel. I'm a neighbor in this case here as a builder developer, but I, I know the zoning there is currently office, and I think the best thing that could happen to that property is they have it changed to multifamily. I think they, this is a good product, I'd like to welcome these gentlemen to the town that I've lived in, and I hope to be a good neighbor across the street where we're going to be someday, building something in advance. You know, I, I think they got a great product here, and I just wanted to welcome the coming, glad somebody took that property, it's been there longer than their attorney represented. He, he said 1986, but that was there since the tollway came there in about 1952, when Hal Frank here was born, so. Yeah, I know, yeah. Anyway, I'm just happy to see some, some energy coming to Gurnee and some development going on, and hopefully we see some more in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. At this time, I'm going to close the floor of the public. Hal, do you want to take the questions? Hal?
So thanks for, for this time, seeing your presentation, being here today, I appreciate it. Regarding the tree, I think we did our best to adapt, but really, it is in our own interest to make the property look better. I think, you know, handcasing, that's always, you probably know, handcasing really is important to a resident. It's really one of those, we gave out the first impression that we got at the apartment. So we're, in the long run, we're just very interested in the tree that we can have on site. I forget all of the questions, but the second question that I remember is about what type of housing we're proposing. So we are proposing luxury housing here. It's just an estimate at this point, and very early on, we're thinking about 1,600, around that per unit for a monthly lease. Pet-friendly? And I am in that concern as well. And I think we really addressed that a little bit with the traffic analysis and study, but I can also speak to our experience with typical, like, very similar type apartment communities throughout the United States, where we're looking at typical kind of sites, typical units, that makes it one and two bedrooms. And I can say that we're proposing 1.6 per unit here, but our standard is really 1.5 spaces per unit. We find that that more, is more than sufficient for our residents. And I've given you a couple of examples of our apartment complexes where we have 1.5, 1.6 in the range.
And just to clarify, they're providing 253 parking spaces. They're required to provide 266, so that's 13 short of code. But they're also providing a land banked area for six if there is an issue. Ultimately, they would only be down seven. Our traffic consultant looked at it, it's, didn't feel that it was going to be an issue.
Okay.
And I think the only other question that I heard was a question about, is it going to be a pet-friendly facility?
Yeah, we do allow pets at the facility. Sometimes we do have fast car stuff on. We haven't gotten that, what is it, down here, but that is something we have to communicate.
Okay. All right, back to members of the board. Todd, you want to go first?
I think we answered the question. The ones that we were agreeing with, the smaller sign, I think most of us are. I'm not, there's exceptions to the request.
Edwin?
No, I'm good. My questions were answered.
Yeah, I'm generally in favor of all the exceptions, again, with, just, I'm taking a look, and just, these are the signs. This is the one in the package. and these are the signs, this is the one in the package, and then this was the smaller proposal. I think we'd be in more favor of this one. So is that the general?
Yeah, yeah. And we're all clear and understanding about the remediation versus the buffer zones and the landscaping.
Well, the main thing is that it's not the final version or anything, we're going to have money set aside if need be.
Well, this is preliminary PUD plat approval, so they have to come in for final, they would come in with their final landscape plans at that point. They could either go before the village board and figure out what they're going to do with their, to make up for the replacement trees either before, so that if they need to add any in, then they could add them in at the final plans that you see for the final PUD plat approval, so.
One more question, not really pertaining to this, but I think you may have answered it. The money in lieu of when they don't plant trees, do we use that to plant trees somewhere else?
Yes, the village does.
Okay, parks, parkways?
Throughout town, usually not parks, because that's park district property, but usually parkway trees. You know, as you probably know, the village was decimated by ashmore. So you know, some of those types of things, just loss of trees over the years. But if we can put as many back on that site as possible, we will, but we don't want to make it to the point where it's detrimental to the trees that are being planted there.
Right, I understand that, you don't want to cram trees in where they don't belong.
Correct.
Because they don't thrive and...
Right, right, I understand.
Dave, did you want to say something? Oh, okay. If nothing else, a motion would be in order.
I can do it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Motion to forward a favorable recommendation, the petition of AR Building Company for a zoning map amendment rezoning the subject property from O1 PUD to R6 PUD with preliminary PUD and site plan review approval for a 153-unit apartment complex in substantial conformance with the plans reviewed by the PZB on 316, 2022, including the requested exceptions. The exception of that smaller 12-foot sign as listed in tab 28.
As an additional exception.
As an additional exception to the ones already presented.
Second by Mr. Nortoff, any discussion on the motion? Do you want to go ahead, roll call please?
Campbell? Nortoff?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Jay Pat?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. As you know, this is just the next step, and the village board will make their final decision, and Tracy or Dave will let you know when that will happen. We have a meeting on the calendar for April 6th, will it happen?
We have a public hearing.
We have a public hearing, then it will happen, all right. Move to adjourn. You have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I can't yet. Sorry. I'd like to open the floor to the public for anybody that has something to say that's not related to what was on this evening's agenda. Close the floor to the public. Now you can adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, carries, thank you everyone.